Welcome, everybody. And of course, those who might... Annie, is this being recorded on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so anybody who online is watching also. Do we need to do a roll call, Manager Foggan? Okay. Why don't we stand, though, and have the pledge of allegiance, please, and just follow me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And once again, thanks for being here. We have some important meetings, things to discuss, and I'll turn the time over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everybody. It is a pleasure to be here this afternoon with you. As, just as a reminder, this is a tradition that we started, I think, four years ago. And it's really our mid-year check-in with, with our current budget and also what we have an opportunity to do mid-year. Because we're kind of crossing calendar year with, with our fiscal year, it's nice because there's a whole bunch of economists that are out giving 2023 forecasts. So that kind of helps us. We, we rely on those heavily as we, as we start in our budget process. And so, really, this, this meeting is designed to share with you, you know, where we are mid-year, what, just a reminder of kind of capital projects that we're working on, as well as just a reminder of what our five-year capital projects look like. And then to share with you kind of what the five-year forecast looks like. And that's not just revenue, that's revenue and expenditures, so. And that's based on quite a bit of research and conversations that we have internally. And we rely on, on a number of really excellent economists. The main one, I would say, is the state's economist. And so, we are basing, you know, I don't know if someone got up and watched MSNBC and saw an economist, a national economist. We, if that's interesting, that's great. We actually like the economists that look at our, our local and state and regional issues more than we do the national folks, because what you will find is that Arizona economics does vary, I would say positively, from the national economic forecast. So we will, we will actually walk you through that. And then because of really where we are halfway through the year and five-year capital projects and five-year forecast, one of the things that was happening this year, or that did happen this year, was Prop 415 did not pass. And so, as part of that forecast, we wanted to show you what a street maintenance program forecast would look like for the next seven to 15 years as well. So those are kind of the subjects we're going to, we're going to cover. And again, this is a tradition that we started four years ago, really like how that really gets us ready for a budget season. Now, obviously, we're still in the process of collecting information, so our, we'll have a calendar, our budget calendar will, will show you that as well. And as a reminder, we do have our council retreat that's scheduled for March 3 as well. So with that, I think we will start through the presentation. Okay. All right. So I've hinted at this already, the agenda. So we're going to cover what the, the economy is looking like for 2023. We're going to give you year-to-date, year-to-date actuals, both revenue and expenditures. And then, as promised, as part of that, we're going to cover our five-year capital improvement plan. That's really the, the general fund, if you, if you will, the non-enterprise fund projects. And then we'll go into our five-year forecast. That, again, is both for revenue and expenditures. And then progress on rate studies. One of the things that we started back when we started this was what, what revenue shortages are we seeing and what are possible funding sources? I don't really think that we're, that we have that for you as much as just, you know, what, what rates are we'll be looking at over the next year. And then the budget calendar. And then, as I said, kind of that alternative funding report for street repair and maintenance. So with that, Ms. Tina.
All right. So as Mr. Foggan shared, we look at our current year, where we are, where we expect to be at the end of the year, and look at our five-year forecast by looking at what the economy's doing and what we're seeing currently. And we look at our inflation, we look at interest rates, we look at unemployment, building permits is a big one locally, and gasoline and diesel prices this year, we're going to look at. And then, of course, supply chain has been something that we have felt the impact of over the last couple of years. And so, want to kind of give an idea of where we are on supply chain. And so, of course, how do all of these affect the remainder of this year? So we know that inflation reached heights at the end of 2021 at 7% and has decreased to 6.5%. We know that that is in part from what our, the federal government has done with interest rates. But it is important to point out, this is the national CPI, and we're seeing that the Phoenix CPI actually, at the end of December, is much higher than what the national rate is, which is 11.5%. So we know statewide, it might be a little bit higher than what we're seeing nationally. So then, as far as the Fed funds rate effect, they have increased interest rates from basically zero last March to where we are actually yesterday, and that's not on here, but they did increase rates yesterday by another quarter percent. But you will see how that inflation is starting to taper off as the interest rates are increasing. So what they're doing is working, but now we are experiencing high interest rates, and that is going to affect other things, such as our construction industry and people's businesses able to expand and whatnot, so. Absolutely, thank you. So unemployment for the Lake Havasu-Kingman area is in line with the state of Arizona and national, and nationally as well. We're at 4.5% at the end of November. We do expect that to be pretty flat, other than not knowing what the construction industry is going to do and all of the construction-related jobs that could potentially increase to maybe 5.5% to 6% is what we're hearing through fiscal year '25. But right now, we're expecting it to stay about where it is.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I sat through an economic forecast last week, and what was interesting about the unemployment rates, at least for Arizona, were that the economist had pointed out that we, we probably wouldn't see large increases in unemployment, but what it would look like for us is that the help-wanted sign that we're constantly seeing on, on windows and doors of businesses, that some of those signs will come down. And it won't directly affect the unemployment rate, but that's how businesses may deal with it, is just not fill positions. So again, I, I think for Arizona, we continue to be in that spot where it's, it's actually what they're referring to is a, a soft recession, a light recession, and that we're not expecting to see any large spikes. Unemployment's usually one of those that you, you look at, and you, and, and we are often concerned by that. We, we watched that happen in 2020 for the pandemic, where we got this huge spike in unemployment, and that was really alarming, but not expecting to see that in the upcoming years.
So this is something that we like to keep our eye on, which are building permits locally and what we're seeing. And so, where we are fiscal year-to-date, and that's how we gauge and budget, so from July through December, we issued 53 new single-family residential building permits, compared to last year at 150 at the same time. So we're certainly seeing a decline in building permits. And in talking with our internal departments, who have a pretty good gauge with some of the local builders, they're hearing the same things, that building is slowing. We reached out to Lake Havasu, too, just to see if they're feeling the pinch yet, too, and they're exactly where we are. They're 60%, they're expect, they're at a 60% drop year-to-date as well, fiscal year-to-date. And so statewide, we're also expecting a decline in building permits this year and next year as well, and hopefully, it will start to recover again in fiscal year '25, so. And I bring up gasoline and diesel prices because we have all felt the pinch, and certainly citywide, we have felt the pinch. And what we're hearing from the U.S. Energy Information Administration is that they actually believe that in '23 and '24, we will start to see a decline in both the gasoline and diesel prices. So that's some good news for all of us. Okay. All right. So moving on to our year-to-date, budget-to-actuals, looking at our local TPT, our transaction privilege tax, that is our largest source of revenue. And we have experienced an 11% increase through November, which is, is great, but prior years, we were experiencing 16%, which was during the COVID years. So in '21 and '22, we are experiencing more. We are starting to see a slowdown in some of the, in some of the categories, retail, hotels, and we are seeing a slowdown in our construction sales tax already. And you have to remember that when a building permit's issued, the construction sales tax doesn't roll in for quite some time. So if we're already starting to see that, it's going to be even a bigger drop as time goes on. We're starting to see a drop in rental property leasing, and also just people who rent furniture and rent lease vehicles, that tax as well is also starting, we're starting to see a slowdown, so. Yes? Can you remind me, last, last year, you usually predict, like, if we're going to be up a certain percent or down? And we're up 11, but what was your prediction for this year? So we are going to be almost right in line to what, what we're estimating is almost right in line with what we budgeted for this year. So I don't know if that's going to come to play. We still have a few more months before we actually finalize the forecast, and we've got a few more months of sales tax, so we'll be able to gauge that better, but based on what we're estimating, right in line. Nice, thank you. You're welcome. So this is, this shows the comparison of where we were back in 2020 through November, and you'll see that there has been an incline, and we don't expect that to take place next year, and you'll see that as we look at the, the forecasts. And then the state shared revenues, we like to look at those, too. That's also our secondary primary source of revenues. And so, sales tax is one of those state shared revenues, and the state is feeling the same thing that we are, and they are expecting a decline in their state shared, in, sorry, in their sales tax. Not a decline, just not as much of an increase as what they received, as what they collected last year. Our, HERF funding should remain about the same, or has remained about the same. Our vehicle license tax, about the same. You will see that the urban revenue sharing, which is the state income tax, is a much larger increase this year. And that is solely because during the pandemic, if you recall, the state of Arizona allowed taxpayers to extend their tax filings from April to July. And so, a lot of people took advantage of that, and so, we are the recipients of that this year, and that will definitely taper off in the out years. That was solely because of the extensions that were allowed. All right. So looking at our general fund and looking at the budget versus where we are year-to-date... Yeah, it is hard to read. All right. So you'll see where we are with sales tax. So we are 41.7% through the year, meaning that we're five months through the year. And we look at that as far as the percent of the budget, percent of the budget that we've actually collected. And so, we have, we budgeted $48.6 million in revenues for fiscal year '23 in the general fund, and we've collected about 41%. There are a couple of line items that I do want to point out, and that's where those arrows are. One is that our licenses and permits are down, and you'll see that we have only collected 25% of those year-to-date. That is because of our building permits, the slow, the slowdown in activity. And, but I do want to point out the investment income. So one thing about interest rates is that although that hurts consumers and businesses as far as borrowing money, it certainly helps those of us who are invested in the market. And we are seeing that in our investment income, and we are expected to collect about $3 million citywide this year in investment income. We haven't seen that in years. And 1.2 million of that is actually going to hit the general fund. So then, looking at our expenditures and where we are year-to-date, from that perspective, we budgeted $32.6 million for the year, and we're about 34% through that. Part of the, part of the, the budget that has affected us and that we haven't been able to spend, as we had hoped, are our vehicle leases and our capital outlay, and that is solely due to the effect of the supply chain. We are still seeing, honestly, 12 to 18 to 24 months in lead times from when we're ordering things. And so, we've been trying to get vehicles for a very long time, and it has been a challenge. And that affects that capital lease item, and equipment is the same way. So that is the reason for not having that spend at a, at a higher percentage. So moving on to our HERF revenues and expenditures, looking at those. So for HERF, we have our year-to-date, I'm sorry, our budget is just over $5.5 million, and we have collected about 41%. So we're right on target with what, with what we budgeted, and the same thing applies to the HERF fund. It also will be the recipient of investment income of over $200,000. And you'll see that in another slide, you'll see that was much, much less in prior years. Expenditure-wise, we've spent about 12% of the, of the budget, and a lot of that also has to do with the supply chain. And I don't want to forget about, about our enterprise operating funds and where we are with those as well. And that is our water operating, our wastewater operating, our solid waste, and our airport. Those are our four operating funds that we, we consider enterprise funds. And so, you'll see where we are revenue-wise with those as well, slightly above where we would normally be at this time. And then the expenditure-wise also. And with having adopted development fees pretty recently, in fiscal year '22, you'll see where we were, which we collected, we started collecting development fees in October of last year, and so, we really only collected them for about just over eight months. And you'll see that for the entire year of, of fiscal year '23, what we're estimating is a, you know, a decline, and we will have collected those for the entire year. But again, that's based on building permits. It's directly going to impact our development fee collections. Okay. So moving on to our five-year capital, and this is the five-year capital plan that was adopted with this fiscal year, year's budget. So what are our funding sources for our non-enterprise funds? And those are operating fund revenues, so our taxes and our state shared revenues, our room tax, we have grants, we have outside contributions. If we choose to use a general issue, a general obligation bond, we also have that, and development fees, we use those for our non-enterprise capital.
Yeah, and I just, one of the things I want to do is just remind the council that in, in getting a project onto the five-year capital plan, in order for that capital project to actually be listed, it has to have one of these, or several of these components to be on that. So it has to have some kind of funding source. We'd have and have maintained a list of capital projects, and we refer to that as unfunded capital projects. Those are not part of our five-year capital plan because there's no revenue associated with them, so they just become kind of a wish list that are just hanging out there. So all of the projects that are currently on our five-year capital plan have one or multiple of these identified as, as a funding source for them. So just want to make sure that everybody remembers that, because we have, in the past, had a really, really large capital project list, but a large majority of those projects had no, no envisioned funding source whatsoever, so. So what you're seeing are projects that have been, that have been designated with some kind of funding.
Ron or Tina, can you define a little bit more general obligation funds, secondary property tax?
Sure. So general obligation bonds are the strongest bonding source that this, any city municipality can do, and it basically requires a vote of the citizens, and they commit to paying a port, amount of property tax equal to repaying the debt of what's being issued over the life of that debt. And then, once that debt is paid, the general obligation bond paid off, that, that property tax allotment is gone.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll continue. Yeah, I'm doing a great job, thank you. So not exactly wanting to, to work through all these, these are in the, in our current budget, just wanted to, I really, the, the point of this is to show, remind everybody what the projects are, what the five-year capital projects look like, when, when they're going to occur in that five-year window, and obviously, the funding source for those. And so, I just, you know, I'll just, you know, grabbing one, the one that we see every year is cart buses as an example. Cart buses are something that we rely on, they get replaced on a pretty regular basis, pretty important to our public transportation. Those work through grants and the transit revenue as an example of funding. And so, you'll see that on the right-hand side. We have some pretty important projects this year that we're still hoping to get through. As Tina said, one of the things that we've found is a huge challenge since 2020, and I, you know, I, I don't know if you all are as frustrated as I am about it, but supply chain, lack of contractors, you know, those folks that do the work, not being able to move forward on, on projects that we've had in the five-year capital budget since, you know, 2018, 2019, and we're still trying to get them done. But that's, this, this list is, is actively being worked on for the next budget year. And again, we, we expect to have, because of the fact that we're still dealing with supply chain and we're still dealing with lack of contractors, that we expect some of these projects to roll over into fiscal year '24. So hopefully, some of the work is done in '23, but we are, that is the reality that we've been facing for the last two years, unfortunately, so. What else would, anything that I'm missing on that one? Okay. One of the things I'll also point out is, you'll see in the five-year capital plan is a number of facility improvement projects. Something that we've, that we've tried to tackle more over the last couple of years is having a better plan for building improvement and upgrades, remodels, and having a facilities plan that we can see things coming and plan for as well. You'll see a, a number of remodels, and, and that's in, in, most of our departments, we've got, you know, some older buildings, and we've got some, some buildings, just, you know, to pick on some of our fire stations. We did a remodel on fire station number two. It was desperately needed, but when, when you start digging into it, you start finding that, you know, the other, the other stations need a revamp as well. So currently, working on getting those done as an example. One of the things that I, I do want to point out is that part of the supply chain that we're starting to run into that's really alarming on, when it comes to five-year capital plans, is large pieces of equipment are, we're being told, you know, Tina had said 18 months to two years out. There are pieces of equipment that we're being told are three years out, and how do you possibly plan and pay for something that they want you to pay for today, and they're going to deliver three years from now? But that is, that is what we're seeing, and that's everything, that really is everything from fire trucks to boom lifts to street sweepers, and, and even vehicles have been just an absolutely huge challenge. We're actually getting vehicles that were, that were originally budgeted in 2000 are finally rolling in, in, in this fiscal year. So trying to forecast and, and get them here with, you know, with departments that are not only are growing, but are using equipment that is tired and needs to go out the door. So it has definitely been challenging to juggle our capital projects over the last couple of years. And I just want to throw out some kudos, the fire department, recognizing that there was this, these issues have actually, on here, you'll notice that they've got a, a couple of projects on trucks. One is the ladder truck, and another is an engine where they're, we've actually found a company in Las Vegas that is, that does major refurbs, and so, they're going to be able to extend the life of these vehicles by another seven to 10 years with a, not, you know, 20% of what it actually would have cost to replace them. So that's the kind of work that the departments are doing in this five-year improvement plan to try to, to try to plug those, those really long delays. And, and we, again, not exactly sure that we have a plan to deal with three-year order times, but we're going to, we're going to try to tackle them best, as best we possibly But we're going to, we're going to try to tackle them as best we possibly can. Yes?
On these-
Is your microphone on?
It's so loud. I'm not used to it. Sorry.
You're fine.
On these fire station remodels, they've been on the budget for, I think, a couple of years now. Do you anticipate that these will happen in this budget cycle?
I anticipate that they're going to happen in fiscal year 23 and 24. I think they're going to happen in calendar 23.
In 23?
Yeah.
So this calendar year?
Yeah.
And are we doing those in-house or those are going out to bid?
Yeah, they're way above what we could possibly do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one's in addition to a station and a gutting of a kitchen, and the other's a major remodel inside the station. Matter of fact, the crew at station four is really going to have to be relocated until that work's done. They won't be able to live in the station. So, yep, good question. Thank you. All right. You know, I guess one of the, a couple of the projects that are always on people's minds, and I do absolutely want to point out that Kingman Crossing, both the Kingman Crossing Boulevard and the TI, as well as Rancho Santa Fe Interchange and the Parkway are actively being worked on. They've, obviously, as we, depending on where we are with them, they will roll over to the next year. Based on where we are, guaranteed they'll be in fiscal year 24. And, you know, just where the KX Ventures for Kingman Crossing is currently working with AECOM on the design of their project. And 60% plans will be submitted in a couple of weeks on that project. So there's still, looks like they're still on schedule to be 100% plans on that project by end of April, May. So pretty, pretty exciting there as well. So other than that, that is, I believe, all of our capital projects.
I have another question.
Yes, please.
The, on the Kingman Crossing, I think we all saw that the, that the clock is going to start ticking for them again in May when the government removes the health, the public health emergency. And so I don't remember how much time they have left to get there before they have to be up and built. Has there been any discussion of that?
So there was discussion with the CEO of the hospital, and then he left. And so just waiting for the CEO, the new CEO that was just announced, to get his feet under him for a couple of weeks. And then, one of the things that we were talking about is updating the dates. Because when they called timeout, obviously, the clock stopped ticking. So the dates in the agreement are going to have to be updated to match reality. So that's what we were working on. And then when he was gone, there was, just that got put on hold. But now that they've got a new person in place, we'll finish those conversations.
Okay. So with all these delays that you've been talking about that affect the city, that will affect them in getting their retail space up?
Yeah.
And then they'll be back under the gun. So as soon as we have those dates-
Well, and I would say that they, there's work actually, from their standpoint, they've already come in for a pre-construction meeting on their sub, their commercial subdivision and their utility, the utilities required for that. So they're, they are actively working on that, that commercial subdivision. So changing the dates, I don't anticipate that being really, really difficult. And it'll just be a matter of pulling out the calendar and saying, okay, here's where, here's where these dates were. What's, you know, is it, do we just bump them two years? I seriously doubt we'll need to, but that'll be part of the discussion of what's realistic. But based on the fact that they're already working on some of the commercial subdivision is, would suggest that they don't need a lot of time.
Good, that's promising.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ron, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Then on the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, I noticed you've got a new number there for cost. Is that, what, 46 million?
Yep.
Is that a more realistic?
So that's the, that's the number that we actually budgeted. And that matches what our, when we hired the third-party cost estimator, that matched up with the number that we'd already budgeted, so.
But that number is how old now? I mean, that's what we budgeted, but is that an updated price because of things have gone up in price?
This is what was adopted by the council.
Okay.
And went into effect July of 2022.
Right.
And we did the cost estimate in this last fall that matches that number.
I have a question. Does that include the state's 20 million or is that just city money?
Sorry, that's the entire project, including the state's money.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yes.
It's not all the money coming from the city.
Good question. We have to appropriate the whole thing, but we are getting contribution from the state.
That's, and it also includes contribution from the developer as well.
Thanks.
Yep, sure thing. Anything else? Move on to the forecast? Okay.
All right, so in our five-year forecast, we are including some major level of service changes. One of those is that the recreation center will open. And certainly, when the recreation center opens, there's going to be an increase in expenses and some revenues received. So we are including that, as well as our electric vehicle experience opening also. We are also taking into account that Sunbelt Sports Park will also be open. We are including a program for the street repairs, maintenance, and improvements. And it does include a fully funded compensation plan. So let's see if I can see that. So as I shared, there is, we are anticipating an economic slowdown. We don't expect it to be long-term. And we do believe that there will be a slow recovery that will begin in fiscal year 2025. We know that discretionary consumer spending is beginning to slide, and we are expecting that in the next couple of years. And of course, the building industry is already feeling the effect. So the assumptions that we used for a few of the major revenue sources, I wanted to share with you so you could see year over year what that looks like for our TPT or our sales tax, state shared revenues, the building permits and construction sales tax. And you'll see that in fiscal year 23, where we believe that will be. And of course, we're going to be hit hard with our building permits and construction, and that's going to continue through fiscal year 24. You'll also see that our total sales tax and state shared revenues, we are experiencing, we are expecting a decrease in those numbers in fiscal year 24. But in the out-years, we are expecting a slight, slight increase. Now, this is in line with the state's budget as well. They're also seeing similar, similar projections. I don't know what their out, out-years are, but I know that they're, for fiscal year 23 to 25, that's what they're, that's what they're seeing. It is also in line with some of what the state economists are seeing. We also know that there are some state tax cuts based on the flat tax rate that went into effect. And we will feel that in our urban revenue sharing state share distribution or the income tax state shared revenue distribution. And that will begin in fiscal year 25. And it does not include proposals that are on the plate right now or that have just been, the bills that have been dropped that will affect some of the sales tax and state cut rate, state tax income rates. So for instance, there are some more proposals for state income tax cuts. There's also a proposal to exempt certain products from our retail TPT category, as well as just eliminating our ability to tax residential rentals overall. We are including water rate increases starting in fiscal year 24. And we are including solid waste rate increase in fiscal year 25. And some new debt issuances that we knew were going to take place with both of the, with the traffic interchanges, as well as some water infrastructure. And fire station five will be partially funded with development fees. And we will have to issue a bond to do that.
Do we have numbers on what each one of these will be that we're going out to bond for?
We have assumptions. We do at this point.
Okay. When will we see those? Are they in here farther down?
They're not in here. They're not in the forecast.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, or in the presentation. So moving on to the general fund major revenue sources. We know that our sales tax or TPT and state shared revenues for the general fund are the major revenue sources. And so what does that look like? What did it look like in fiscal year 22? What do we expect in 23 and then moving forward? So you will see again that we do expect an increase at the end of fiscal year 23, but then a slight decline in fiscal year 24 and then recovering. You did see those assumptions earlier. And it is important to note, and I share this every year, that 62% of our general fund revenues come from sales tax and 28% comes from our state shared revenues. So again, two major funding sources for that fund. And then when we look at our general fund's revenues, expenditures, and transfers, because the fund does support quite a few other programs and activities throughout the city, you'll see that in fiscal year, so the blue line are our revenues and our incoming transfers. And the red line are expenditures and outgoing transfers. So there is a little bit of a discrepancy or a variance, certainly, between our revenues and expenses in fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24. But they then begin to line up in the out-years. And that difference between the revenues and expenses will be funded with fund balance or our reserves. So something that we talk about every year. And that, and that we try to, whenever we're budgeting, we ensure that we're following the city council's fund balance policy that was adopted back in 2013 or 14. And that states that the city will maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance in its general fund, ranging from 25 to 50% of the budgeted expenditures and the outgoing transfers. And so it's probably worth talking about what unassigned means and just clarifying that. So at the end of the year, we end up with reserves. And of those reserves, we have certain restrictions on what those monies can be used for. So for instance, the city council required, or the city council put into effect years ago that a portion of the room tax that we collect is going to be dedicated to tourism. And so that portion cannot be used for anything else. So it comes off, and it comes off from that total reserve amount. We also issued a pension obligation bond recently. And of those monies, council adopted a contingency reserve fund policy, which was about $4.6 million that we were going to keep in the event that we needed to fund that unfunded obligation. So that's another $4.6 million that can't be used for anything else. And then on top of that, if there are, if in the next budget year, if we are not generating enough revenues to take care of all of our expenditures and outgoing transfers, then that amount of money has to be used to fund the difference. And so what's remaining after that is what we call our unassigned fund balance. And that is what we have to keep the 25 to 50% of based on what the council adopted a few years ago. All right. So when we look at our general fund's projected reserves, this is the unassigned fund balance and what it looks like, what it looked like in fiscal year 22, what we expect in 23, and what we, based on our forecast and what you'll see as part of Jack's presentation, where we anticipate to keep that fund balance in the out-years at right about 35% based on our, based on our forecast. However, Councilman Walker had asked for a history on our total reserves. And so we wanted to be sure to share that this afternoon as well. And so going back to 2002, what our total reserves are, are in the blue line and what the unassigned reserves or the unassigned fund balance were, and what that looks like year over year, and what that will look like at the end of fiscal year 23 based on our estimates. So there is, I know that there is confusion on what our total reserves are versus what our fund balance policy is. And I, I think that this, this graph is, it helps to explain because we do have $44.8 million at the end of fiscal year 22 in reserves. But much of that is already accounted for, for other purposes and other uses. So the amount that's left over is the $22.8 million. So moving on to our HERF major revenue sources for our forecast. So in fiscal year, we won't look at 22 or 23. We know what we budgeted and where we are. But looking in the out-years at 24, you'll see normally our HERF funds are the largest revenue source in our HERF fund. However, we are showing that the general fund will transfer monies into the HERF fund to the tune of about $9.5 million next year. And then you'll see where those equate to going out to fiscal year 28. I believe it's $33.7 million is what that totals. And it will be the largest revenue source for the, for the HERF fund. And then looking at the HERF revenues, expenditures, and transfers, you'll see a similar, similar story as what the general fund was in fiscal year 24. We'll see some large revenues coming in. And then, and that's because of the general fund transfer. But then in those out-years, it'll start to, they'll start to line up. And we'll use HERF fund balance for any differences that we have.
All right, I referenced this a little bit earlier. And so one of the things that we wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of are the rate studies that we've been working on. And you will be seeing in the upcoming months. One of the, one of the programs that we, or one of the departments that we looked at a couple of years ago was solid waste and getting the rates realigned. That program, those rates are working and they're working well. So, but one of the things that we did say with regards to those rates was that there would be a needed increase in year three. And so that, we will be showing the council that. We, of course, have not had increases over the last couple of years since we've adopted the rate, the new rates, but not wanting to fall behind. And I can, I'll point out where we have fallen behind quite a bit. But that's solid waste. And we do expect a rate increase to actually go into effect in year four. So that is, I know it says 2025. It's just around the corner, just blink. The other one, of course, is storm rate. We're in the process of a storm rate study now. That, you, some of you that were on council remember, we created an enterprise fund in anticipation of having rate, rate for stormwater. City currently collects no revenue from businesses or citizens on stormwater. We get a payment from the county as part of a countywide tax. They have for stormwater, and it equals about $650,000 a year. And with the amount of washes and drainage that we have in this community, it falls way, way short. And we aren't, certainly not able to take care of the larger projects that are kind of always hanging out there needing to be corrected. So we will have that as part of the, our council meeting on March 21st is where we'll be talking about that rate study and what that will look like moving forward. And then finally, last but far from least, is our water rate study. So we actually, as a community, did this study back in 2018. And it, the study, when it was done, missed a couple of things. So we went back, redid the study in 2019. And we were just getting ready to implement that presentation to move forward with water rates when the pandemic hit. And this was pushed back because nobody knew what was happening in the world. And so with all that being said, our water rates have been the same since 2012 and we are certainly not keeping up with inflation right now. So we will be covering that at our, the first part of that will be covered at a February 21st meeting. We will have a draft report for you on 4-4 and public hearing 6-6. And then if that is approved by the council, those new rates for water will go into place on July 2nd or 6th, just after the new fiscal year starts. So those are really the three studies that we've been involved with over the last couple of years. So the budget calendar, just as a reminder. So we've always put this on our budget calendar. It's not really the budget thing. It's more of the check in on how we're doing for the fiscal year, but we've, we've, we've got the check mark there. A big portion of our budget process happens at our strategic planning retreat with the council. May 4th is our preliminary budget and capital improvement plans sent out to the council. May 10th and 11th are our budget and CIP work sessions. The tentative budget adopted June 6th and then final budget adopted June 20th with the actual budget starting July 1st of 2023. So that, that takes us through our forecast and we've, we're ready to move on to the next section. Was there any questions with regards to the information covered that we can get with you now? If there's not, then what I propose is we take a little bit of a break for an opportunity to get a drink and visit restrooms and pick this back up at, directly at 5 o'clock, if that works for you. Okay, I'm seeing head nods. So we're, we're, we're gonna break for a few minutes and we'll be back at 5. Efficient over time. And the fact that our gas tax that we rely on has not been increased or changed since 1992. So we're actually trying to take care of road infrastructure where you've all seen over the last year, what asphalt and road projects are costing with 1992 money. So it, the challenge is real. It's there. And it's something that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of happy to report that we're far from the only community struggling with it. The sad part is we're, it's, you, it's unique to us because we've got to solve it. So that's kind of my spiel into our pavement management and preservation efforts. And so Jack has put together this, this presentation. So I will actually turn it over to him and I'll be happy to run the slides for you, Jack.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I guess since I don't have the horsepower to tell Ron or Mr. Foggan, rather, that he's doing great and to continue, we'll just go ahead and get on with this. All right. So tonight we'll talk a little bit about street department responsibilities. Councilmember Staley had asked for that. We'll touch on some pavement preservation history, where we are now and some recommendations moving to the future. As Mr. Foggan talked about, we looked at a whole run of scenarios to allow us to get into residential areas and provide some pavement preservation in those areas, well as continue to maintain our arterial collector network. Next slide, please. Oh, with me. All right. Thank you. So first one here, this is the org chart for Public Works. And the orange box there highlighted the street department. Got a great team that's working there. They've been working actually really hard. The monsoon season has been lengthy at this point. So with that, in that group, including the supervisor in the leadership position, my op supervisor and crew lead have 14 people. One thing I did want to highlight that everybody's feeling across the board is the vacancies we've carried. From July to January, we've actually carried between four and six continuously. Whereas of, of January, we were still at six vacancies in that department. One thing that that leads to is overtime. So we have two different versions of overtime here. The first one is when we get called out. So those might be for storm cleanup, you know, emergency response for accidents. Could be any number of things that are, we get called out for after hours. So, so far to date, we've logged 448 hours of call out time and then another 2,248 hours of overtime. So when you're missing people, we still trying to achieve our mission and we end up running additional hours to do so. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our statistics, what we maintain, give you a full picture there. So you guys have seen the number for our asphalt a lot of times, 453 lane miles, 226 centerline miles. I won't read this slide for you. Actually pretty fortunate, we've been working on some updates for GIS and some inventory so we can pull asset management programs together for other assets like we have for our pavement. Two things I would want to like or look, point out, the last two sections, the last two bullets there, 34 acres of maintained drainage area. So those are areas that we currently maintain. There are many, many more acres than that out there, but these are the detention basins, the retention basins, the developed channels. Some of those are, are maybe concrete lined, majority of them are dirt with maybe rip rap armoring, that sort of thing. And then the detention basins, which are just dirt. So as we move on, you'll see where we spend a lot of our time and, and those areas will kind of make sense to you. So the current slide is the total calls for service and that is just what it is irregardless of the type, type of request. This is just the number, doesn't reflect the amount of time that we spend on each one of those calls. So as we move to the next slide, we actually broke out the, the type of request. So if you look at the last slide, 2019 and the current fiscal year So, if you look at the last slide, two thousand and nineteen, and the current fiscal year are both pretty high in call volume. And if you look at the amount of rain that we've had, those two make sense. Three things that seem to run together when we have, have rain is drainage complaints or requests for, you know, repairs and maintenance related to runoff and, and storm damage, potholes and weeds. So, if you look at the back three, the brown, the red, and the green, the green doesn't reflect it so much in the volume of calls, but we'll move to the next page. And this is actually items that we track. So, we, we keep some running tallies of how much time we spend on certain tasks. There's a lot of things that aren't reflected in here, we, you know, we provide support services to other departments and divisions, maybe traffic control. You guys were driving down Andy Devine today, there was a water leak. You know, the street team goes out and they take care of the traffic control, and they do the patching and things behind the water crew. Special events, there's just some items that we don't, we don't necessarily capture at this time for hours. But what this graph is, is the actual hours that are spent on those various tasks that we do track. Again, if you look at the weed abatement number, we spend a significant amount of time on weed abatement. One thing that I didn't highlight in the, in the organizational chart, is we do use seasonal help. So, we have temporary labor services, and we, we predominantly use those guys and gals for our weed abatement program and taking care of some of those areas that are all manual, manual work. There's some limitations, they can't run saws and certain tools, so we have to supplement that with our street team as well.
Jack, I gotta, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Interrupt, on weed abatement, for example, I know we maintain the traffic interchanges with, I mean, not traffic, but the freeway interchanges, in an agreement with ADOT.
Correct.
Does that come under weed abatement?
It does.
Okay.
It does. So, behind that, you see storm and drainage, potholes down there a little bit further, but that is just part of the way our division is broken out. One thing, another thing I didn't highlight in the, the organizational chart, is we have a sign and marking tech which is currently vacant, and then we have two signal techs, and that, that maintenance is continuous. You know, we're going out making repairs to signs that are damaged, ran over, we're trying to do updates right now and get some of our signs up in, in good working order. Signal, same way, we do preventative maintenance often on those, we have a schedule. So, when you look at those, those are, a lot of that's just routine maintenance going out, and we do a quarterly check on every signal in the network.
Quick question.
Yep.
Do you happen to know what it costs a city per hour on these? Is there a, like, the five thousand hours we spend on weed abatement, do you know what that costs?
I, I don't have those figures.
Okay.
It, it's something we could pull together, but I don't have them.
Yeah, maybe down the road, if, I think, I think it's just interesting how much money we're spending, and then you see all this time on something like weeds, and then the stormwater, and we don't have, we don't, we're, we're not yet funding the stormwater projects, but that would help those things go down, correct?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to look at it dollar-wise at some point, thank you.
Yeah, great question. So, two things that, that are still coming up, if you looked at our call volume, we're, we're actually about half of what we were in two thousand and nineteen. Two thousand and nineteen, we received three hundred calls in about a three-day period. We had the storm in October, which was pretty severe and widespread across the, the city. And so, this is also representative, we go out, we get a call, some calls take fifteen minutes, some take a couple days. We roll into a neighborhood, you know, we get a call for a, I don't know why this thing won't be quiet. We get, yeah, I keep turning it off, and apparently my pocket keeps turning it on. I'll set it over there. Sure. Gotcha. Thank you, Annie. We, we received a lot of drainage calls in that time period. And again, we can go into a neighborhood and we'll see, here's the drainage complaint, but we can't just take care of it and leave the rest of it. So, that oftentimes expands from, you know, maybe one person that, that had a request for service, that we do entire block or blocks. So, that's why we track the hours in that as well. Two things that are coming up, one is the growing season is coming, as soon as the sun comes out. We, yeah, sorry, it's, yeah, it's hard to sit at the table, I, you move my hands a lot. So, the growing season for weeds is coming up, as soon as it warms up, we're gonna see a lot more time on that. Additionally, we'll be receiving additional calls for, for service. Right now, the water crew had a, a pretty heavy year for leaks, and so, we still have a lot of hours for utility patching left to take care of. We actually have about a hundred and seventy patches outstanding, but with all the wet weather and trying to take care of the drainage issues as well, we're just behind on that. We're trying to play catch-up on that backlog.
Jack, I've got a question too.
Yes, sir.
Again, then of course, I know, you know, your fiscal year nineteen was of course pretty high. Fiscal year twenty-three, of course, that's not a projected number for the whole year, that's just up year-to-date right now, right?
That's actual calls year-to-date.
Okay, so we're probably, fiscal year will probably be around six hundred or so also.
Yeah, based on what we're seeing so far, if we continue on at the same rate, we'll probably match two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Or fiscal year nineteen's, rather.
Thanks.
So, Tina touched on the, the funding sources and the, the values associated with those. I probably could've got rid of this monstrosity, this is my least favorite slide, but I do like to show where the, the funding sources come from. So, this is just a breakdown for all the funding that comes into the Streets Division for the transportation funding, where that's allocated from. So, I, I guess we can move on to the asphalt side, unless you guys have any questions right now for, you know, the Street Department responsibilities and where they spend their time? Nothing, alright. So, we'll move into the asphalt side. The first slide here, there's two graphs, the top-left one is the lane miles and the percentage of the network by each functional class. So, we have our arterial, minor arterial, collector, and residential. That just breaks down how much of each functional class makes up our network. As you can see, we're, we're around seventy-five percent just for the residential's, they make up the bulk of our network in miles and square footage, yardage, however you wanna measure it. The next one is the current statistics, so looking at the average PCI across each of those functional classes. As you can see, arterial is our highest, we do target arterial collector as our priority, trying to keep those maintained. And so, that bleeds down into our residential, which is currently at a forty-five.
Jack, can you define PCI again for the new members of the council, just in case, bring everybody up to speed?
Yes, that's a great question, thank you for that, Mayor. So, I, I wanna highlight two things. So, PCI is the pavement condition index, it's like a report card, hundred percent is good, zero is bad, you know, and it ranges. Our target right now for the arterial collectors is seventy-five, and then our target for the residential's is sixty-five. That's the cap that we're trying to reach. And if you look, I, what I tried to do is highlight each of the graphs or charts based on that PCI range and where our breakpoints are. I, I wanna move away from PCI, you guys have heard me say it a hundred times, you guys have a decent understanding, and some of you guys are, are coming along with us on that ride. But, I'm gonna try and use condition category, good, fair, poor. Good is green, fair is yellow, poor is red. There's also a, a further category you'll see in this next slide, which is very poor. And the only reason I broke those out, I'm sorry, it's gonna be in the, the next slide over, so I'll get to that in just a second. So, this slide is actually a map of our, sorry about that, this is a map of our network as it is. And again, green is good, yellow is fair, we need to keep it good, or keep it fair, or move it into the good category. And then red is those poor and very poor. As you can see, over half our network is in poor to very poor condition. So, move on to the next one here.
Yeah, just one question.
Yes, sir.
On this, on the chart before, you're showing the residential at seventy-six percent. They're, you're saying they're better than any of the arterial, minor arterial, for the collector?
The, the residential is the lowest PCI value, so our collector, our minor arterial and our arterials are in better shape. The collectors just barely beat that by one point, so they're, they're very close.
I think Councilmember Smiley's talking about the percentage of the network.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pie chart can be deceiving, the blue does not indicate it, condition.
Yeah.
You wanna go to the, to the PCI by function, next to it, in the bar graph?
The pie chart is just the, the number of miles of each of the functional classes that make up the entire network.
And then, of your call volume, do most of those reflect residential complaints about potholes, for example, or arterial?
That's a great question, I actually don't track them by, by location at this time.
Okay.
I would, off the cuff, tell you, yes, that, that is the case.
I would think residential would probably be more complaint-driven.
Our arterials, as you can see, just by the average PCI, arterial and collector network is in better condition, nets less potholes. So, most of the service requests we get are gonna be in the residential areas. And some of them, we get multiples in one place, you know, I've showed you guys a slide in the past of, of roads that after a, a good rainstorm, we have, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty potholes in a mile stretch, so. So, this is a slide that I was referencing, again, this is actual, the number of miles by percentage in this case, in each of the condition categories. So, I broke out very poor separately, typically I just run those in the map, cause they're just very poor. Those are the roads that are gonna be the worst, those are gonna be the reconstructs, highest cost. So, fortunately, we're low in that, but we have a lot of pores that are still in that rehabilitation and the upper end of some of the reconstruction categories.
Jack, of the very poor to poor, what percentage is tipping on the very poor, from poor?
I don't have that, I don't have that with me, and, and really, that's a difficult piece to identify across the board. One thing that we end up doing is we break the, we break the network into sections. So, we have four hundred and fifty lane miles roughly of road, we have eight hundred maintenance sections. So, you'd have to go individually to each one of those sections and determine. But, in the budget scenarios, we can see the difference when we run a budget scenario, when we're capturing those roads, because that's what you see. We fall from a good category into fair, or we fall from fair into poor, and your costs increase. And so, what we've seen is the sooner we spend the money, the sooner we keep those roads, or we actually prevent those roads from falling into those other categories. So, some of that is, is kinda visible in, in these next slides that we'll go through too, but individually, I, I couldn't tell you the number of roads.
And that's kinda, I mean, you went exactly where I wanted you to go, as far as cost, you know. Like, we have poor roads, and then when they get to be very poor, they get to be very expensive. So, you know, just kind of correlating the two.
Yes.
With the expense, so I'm, I'm glad to know that we're gonna cover that, thank you.
Alright, next slide here, this is preservation spending by year from two thousand and two to current. And so, the, a couple of things that are important to note here, went through old projects, and I was trying to find other treatments that have been used, but predominantly was chip seal, and I was able to find some, some old projects through engineering. Mr. Foggan talked about, you know, nineteen ninety-two money, we're doubling down on our problem, we have a larger network. Just in our update, we, we increased our number of lane miles by seven percent. We have additional traffic, you know, we have more people here, more use. And then, was somewhat depressing when I was looking at the pricing, project prices for three inches of asphalt be like what we're gonna do on Andy Devine next month, what we've done on Andy Devine and Stockton and other sections. It used to be seven dollars and eighty-five cents, up into the early two thousands to about ten dollars and fifty cents per square yard. So, a three-by-three piece of asphalt, three inches deep, ranged between, call it, eight dollars and ten dollars and fifty cents. Right now, we're paying well over twenty, we have been. You know, our, our milling fills are running typically, depending on which road it is and, and traffic control and things, between twenty-seven and, you know, some of them are getting close to thirty dollars per square yard. So, that same three-by-three square has gone from seven dollars a square, a piece, you know, to over twenty-five. The, I'll just touch on the funding here, you can look and see, oh-seven, oh-eight, as we're rolling into the economic decline, we saw a pretty significant decrease. The funds started to come back, we have some funding in place. Tina talked about the, the logistics issues and trying to get contractors and people on board. So, fiscal year twenty-two, we were funded and we've rolled that money over to the current fiscal year. We were unable to get those projects off the ground. We actually had proposals for over five million dollars ready, but the contractors were booked out for over a year at that point. So, we're working with them again, we're updating those, and we're anticipating the five million dollars out the door this fiscal year, but the full ten million over the calendar year. Part of that's been, a big portion of that's been contributed to by the wet weather we've had. As you can see, our, our crew is actually who goes and preps, does the patching, the, the repair and the prep work ahead of whatever treatment's coming, a lot of those, you know, if they're chip seals or slurries or whatever they are. And being short, and then having them out, trying to manage what we're receiving in, in requests for service, a lot of those related to drainage, is just delayed that. So, they're really working to, to get ready and get those out this fiscal year.
So, Jack, if, just for clarification, I think that one of the things is that there's some spikes in here that, that we probably need to explain. So, if you don't mind, I'll just jump in.
Absolutely, thank you.
And Tina can correct me when I'm wrong. And, of course, we, we know that in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we, we go into what is known as the Great Recession. And as most people may not be aware, municipalities are slow to go into recession and are slow to come out of recession, because just the way that revenues and taxes are paid. So, but what happens, what starts happening in two thousand and eight is everybody starts scrambling for money. And the state was no different. And you will notice that in, in Jack's most hated slide, there was, there used to be three percent of the funds in our roads being contributed by lottery, and those went away rapidly. And then, many of you may have heard of the Great Herf Sweep. And that was basically the state shared money, they just basically took it away from cities. And that, you can, you can see the, what happened starting in two thousand and nine, ten. By the time we get to fiscal year eleven and twelve, we're, for all intents and purposes, not spending any money on street maintenance. And then, Herf comes back, or starts to come back, anyway. And so, you see that, the march up again, and then in twenty, fiscal year twenty eighteen is when the council had increased, took a, a half a cent increase, and you see that large spike in spending. We actually did some pretty major projects on Stockton Hill Road and Route sixty-six, Andy Devine. And then, of course, Prop four thirteen repealed that half cent, and again, kinda the drop back. And ever since two thousand and eighteen, we've been really scrambling to try to figure out how to tackle. What you can see, I think, over time, has been a lack of funding for pavement preservation and, and maintenance. And so, the commitment that we, that the council made last year to ask for an increase and use quite a bit of funding from the general fund, is, I think that shows pretty good faith on the council's efforts to try to do maintenance and preservation, but recognizing that, that that's being done with existing revenue. So, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood kind of what was happening in that chart. Go ahead, Tina.
I was just also gonna share that the council back in two thousand and twelve also adopted that one percent additional tax for street repair and maintenance, and you'll also see that in the slide for the average spend too.
Good point.
So, to Mr. Foggan's point, council has definitely.
Yeah. Yeah, the council saw that what was happening clearly, that the, you know, with no Herf money, something had to be done. And so that is the bar and restaurant apportion. Herf didn't fully come back until twenty seventeen, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty. So it's been a challenge when you, when a large part of your revenue comes from someone that controls your destiny, AKA the state, so.
Thank you.
So Ron, the Herf funds, what percentage of the Herf funds we get back do we use on the streets? Does it all go to the streets?
About thirty percent. All of it's used to run the streets department, and thirty percent of that, that's, now, that's a real average number. You know, it's rough, but on average, thirty percent of the Herf funds are put towards maintaining and preserving our streets.
And where does the rest of it go?
To run the streets department. Personnel, equipment, you know.
And do we own our own equipment? Do we do the streets, or do we do strictly contractors?
When we maintain streets, we have been doing a combination, but mostly contract work over the, especially the big projects. The big projects that you're seeing in here of, since twenty eighteen, are all contractors because those are ginormous projects.
Is that because it's cheaper to have them do it, or because we don't have the equipment and manpower?
We don't have the equipment nor manpower to do that kind of work. And really, I'm not aware of city, any cities that really have that capability to do those very large projects.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll kind of touch on that and some of the options that we brought forward to you guys as well. But just to highlight the, what Mr. Foggan's talking about with contract stuff. The day-to-day retune maintenance, those sorts of things are done by our crews, the patching, the grading, all that. And yes, we do own our own equipment related to those activities. So just wanted to touch for just a moment, some of you guys have seen these lots of times, but the typical pavement distresses. We're going to talk about decision trees and how we select treatments and why we select treatments. And really, that's based off of a distress on pavement. And so here's what we see. We track seven of them in our management system. And they actually rate the type and the severity of those distresses in a maintenance section. And that's how we calculate the PCI or the condition category. So we can move to the next one. And again, I don't want to spend a lot of time on these. We've seen them lots of times. But depending on the severity of a distress and the amount of that type of distress in a maintenance section, your costs are going to be higher because your PCI goes lower. Your condition category is lower. So you start falling in those red areas. So if you look at the current slide, the top has a green line that curves down and then pops back up. So that's typical of a preventative maintenance program. So we build a road, it's brand new, you know, it's a hundred percent. It starts to decline in condition right off the bat. You have oxidation, you have wear, raveling. All those factors start to wear down and decrease the condition of that asset. We come in, we do a lower-cost treatment, preventative maintenance, and we can extend the life cycle of that asset out almost indefinitely with preventative maintenance. There is caveats to that, you know, a certain point, you can do so many treatments before, surface treatments before you have to do a mill or you have to do something else. When we take that further down into the rehabilitation and down into the reconstruction categories, if we select the wrong treatment, we don't get as good a return. So you'll get an increase in PCI, but it's going to be short. It won't bring you back up to those higher condition categories, and it's going to have a shorter life cycle. So we, we're always, you guys have heard it a hundred times, right treatment, right road, right time. And so we did an update, actually, so we can go to the next slide, to our pavement management system. And this is just an example decision tree. And it kind of highlights those points, you know, the type of distress, the severity. And this one breaks it down even, you know, into different types of functional classes, essentially. We don't spend a lot of time on that, but I just want to give this as an example. It's one of the better ones I've found so far. They are heavy on the milling fill side, but that's not where we wanted to be, just simply because of cost. And there's two parts of that. One, the initial cost to build, but it triggers some ADA requirements and other things. So the slide that we have up right now, this was the decision tree that came out of our pavement management update. And so it's broke down by arterial, collector, and residential. This is based solely on contract pricing of having contractors come in and complete that work. So we'll go to the next slide. And this is an updated, I highlighted, it's the same slide, but if you look inside the red box, to get into the residential areas, we again reduce the level of treatments that we're going to provide on those residentials. Again, arterial collectors are our priority, and we're dialed back as far as we are comfortable in going without sacrificing their condition. And those are our major roads. Those are the ones that carry, you know, everybody to and from their residence, to and from businesses. Those are our lifeline around our network. So next slide here, we'll go, is a couple of different scenarios. But as you can see, we took, at the top end, we had light maintenance, which is our fog seals and things. We kept those. Those are things that are still be done contract, but they're cheap. And, you know, part of that reason, when you're looking at buying a truck to do a fog seal, that can range up over four hundred thousand dollars by itself, you know, that is used for a very small window. So past that, we went to chip seals, and we varied the level of chip seal. If you go down, we have single chip, we go to a scrub, and that just dips down into the lower condition categories. And then the last one was to pulverize a road and then do a double chip. And that would, that would take those very poor roads that are beyond being able to rehabilitate and actually bring those back to a level using chip seal. So again, won't spend a lot of time here, but in those right application, this is just a slide that I found from Rocky Mountain Pavement Preservation. And they break down, each treatment has a window you use it in, how well it manages different distresses. And this is the chip seal one. So it'll get down into lower categories well. It's cost-effective. Obviously, there's some cons to it. And part of that is just the acceptance from the neighborhoods. You know, you guys have been around long enough, some of the chip seals, broken windshields, just general complaints because they are, we don't like having the roads that dirty either, but just by the time you get it down and you're falling back and sweeping and trying to get those cleaned up, it's manageable. And the last one that we did in-house, they were, they were successful in that. So the next two slides are going to be Option A and Option B, one through four. And the reality is, we ran about fifty different scenarios and changed each scenario based on different pricing structures and whether we're doing work in-house, whether we're working with another entity, Mojave County specifically. We've had some communications with them, and we still got further steps to go through working with them. But off the cuff, there is an opportunity for a partnership for them to complete our chip seal. They own the equipment, and, you know, we could do a work project with them. They had some limitations on that, what they can handle, because they have a, you know, management program to run themselves. And so they said they could do about thirty-five miles per year for us, which works out because we broke our network into different districts. And so our largest district has about thirty-five miles. So depending on the option that the council were to select or provide us direction on, there's an opportunity for that. So we'll go through Option A, one through four, and then we'll move over to B. So the first one, Option A, is reducing the operating reserves to thirty-five percent. No change in capital projects. And so A1 is contract price. That's not adding FTE, full-time employees. That is not adding equipment. That is just having a contractor come in and complete that work. Each of these scenarios are actually based off of the same funding allocation that would be achieved by reducing the operating reserves to thirty-five percent. Lot of information here. If you have any questions, ask me if I missed something. So year one through eight, I broke that out separately. We were able to run the budget scenario year by year based on the funding expected. And then at year eight, we have exhausted the general fund, or the reserve fund, rather, down to that thirty-five percent, and we go back to the funding levels that we have seen with the bar and restaurant tax and the Herf funds.
When you say with the revenue that's expected, that's revenue we have already in hand, going to have? It's not like if there's a sales tax increase, property tax increase, state changes their mind on Herf? This is already looking at the budget, what we anticipate having in the general fund. Is that correct?
It would be forecasted, but Tina's probably much better at that answer.
That is correct. It does not take into account any sort of cuts, any sort of changes other than what we have shown today in the forecast.
Okay, so we, with what we have, we will see some significant pavement preservation projects happening. Is that correct?
That is. So year one through eight, what we, in all of these scenarios, what we did is we broke out, we technically have nine districts. Our arterial collectors are broken into two separate districts that are on their own. And then we have seven additional districts that represent the remainder of our residential network. So we will be able to achieve treatments across the entire network based on these scenarios. Again, year one through eight, that's our heaviest. Those are our most active years, call it. And so there's a lot going on. By the time we get done with year eight, we'll have touched every district for residentials, and we'll just continue on with the arterial collectors as we have. So we'll maintain those. Our arterial collector network, the average condition actually goes up for those, but then we see a significant increase in the residentials. Just try not to use PCI a lot. What we see, because the residentials make up such a significant amount of the network, when they have a lower PCI, it just lowers the whole network. So you're going to see big jumps, and the reason you're seeing that isn't because our arterial and collectors are jumping up in condition a lot, it's because they are a small piece compared to the residentials. And those are all coming up, you know, pretty significant amounts over time. So year nine through fifteen is the out years, again, where we go back to bar and restaurant. And so as Mr. Foggan indicated, we're going to have to see a longer-term funding source. Once we reach that thirty-five percent level and we go back down, you can actually see the PCI at year one, year five, year nine, and then at year fifteen.
So, Jack, so, I mean, just in looking at that, I see year one through eight, we're going to go from a fifteen percent good to a fifty-five point seven percent good. But then year nine, we go to where our roads are now. We have twenty-seven percent fair, and we're going to be at about twenty-seven point five percent in year nine.
So that's actually year fifteen.
Or, I'm sorry, year fifteen will be it. Okay.
So I am unable, the program is unable to give me the the condition categories by percentage at different years. Alls I see is at the end of the budget calculation that's done. In this instance, we ran the fifteen-year period. And so as you can see, the PCI is slipping, so you're probably seeing an increase or you are seeing an increase in that pore. You're just going to see an increase in the fair, and you're going to see a decrease in your goods, and that's going to be spread out depending on where those roads were in treatment. The roads that happened in year one are the first ones that are going to be falling out in year nine. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because we're going to run a seven-year cycle. So those are the roads that you'll see that, hey, we're due for treatment again.
Can you touch on that a little bit more? Because I think there's so much confusion about, it's a maintenance plan. It's not forever. You can't fix a street and make it green, and it's green for the next thirty years. It is constant maintenance. So you have a street that in year one, you're bringing up the PCI. Sorry, that's the only one I know. We've been using it for years. You can't switch on it.
I know. It's hard.
So we bring it up, and then in seven more years, that thing's in trouble again. And it needs, it needs serious maintenance, right? It's not, it's not like, it just, once it's good, it's good. It's a constant thing because of, it's hot here, and then we have these rains that start with the potholes, and that starts breaking things down. So a street, how often really should it get some kind of maintenance?
So it varies depending on the type of treatment and the roadway. But if you were to just make a kind of average across-the-board statement, you could say between three and eight years. That's for a maintenance treatment. That's the average life expectancy for, you know, the lowest to the highest maintenance treatment you're going to do. When you're talking about asphalt, fortunately for us, our weather is better than other places. We are able to extend that curve out a little further because, aside from, you know, this year and apparently twenty nineteen, the rains haven't been like you would see in, you know, other locations, or we don't have snow like Flagstaff. So we're fortunate there. But again, three to eight years. And then for the design life of asphalt on that curve, you know, the entire length of that curve, depending on, again, the classification, you're talking anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five years with constant maintenance. That's a great point. It's not, we really wouldn't be here if you could build a road and walk away from it, right? We'd build it, it'd be great forever. That's not how it works. You know, oxidation and time wear on our roads, and we need to treat them and maintain them.
So even if you did the treatments, the seal coat, fogging, whatever, chip seal, even if you did that regularly, fifteen years or so, that street isn't still going to be in great shape. It's going to need more maintenance. Is that right? It's going to need something more serious.
In a generalized statement, yeah. Typically, what you see is number of applications before milling fill or milling fill is predominantly what you're going to see in that. So you may see seven cycles. So if we're running a five- or six-year cycle, you might get that thirty-five-year life out of it. But again, there's a lot of variables, so I don't want to make that too generalized because the amount of traffic, the type of traffic, the composition, you know, you have, we have residential roads that function more as a arterial, and so they're carrying heavy truck traffic, they're carrying a large volume of traffic. And so you start to see decreases in the life cycle of those assets. So it's a very, not to give you a general answer, but you're going to see a number of treatments before. Arterials collectors, yeah, you're probably going to see five treatments before we're doing a milling fill. And again, with those being a higher-volume road, that could be anywhere from three to five years. So if you're talking fifteen years, you're hitting the end of the life cycle, and you're going to do a, not a full reconstruct, and we're going to go to a rehabilitation. We might be able to just mill off, you know, an inch and a half and pave that back. If we have a lot of load-related issues, we're going to put, you know, two or three inches back. So it just varies, but it's going to be based off of how many times we put down a treatment. This, these, all of these scenarios, what you're seeing from year one to year nine is one cycle, one treatment. But a lot of these roads have been in place, you know, sixties, seventies, eighties. So it's just a kind of a hodgepodge of looking at that road. What is the type and the severity of the distresses? Because that's how we select our treatments or why we select them. And so we do that on a project basis. So the management plan says, hey, here's your treatments. We actually go out, put boots on the ground. We look at it, we say, yeah, it makes sense. There are times we go out and we look at a road, and, you know, we've had a really good placement because the early construction of these roads is also key. You know, when you're talking about being out of spec for, say, in-place air voids, you're talking about a year's reduction in life cycle for that one percent of air void. So, you know, we get a really good road, we go out and we look at it, and maybe it's calling for a chip seal, and we look at it and say, hey, you know, there's no real surface raveling, there's no weathering. We can do a fog seal. And so we, one by one, go to those roads. Right now, that's not necessarily where we see that. We're typically going out and going, yeah, it makes sense. Let's continue on with that treatment.
Thank you. So are we doing, I don't know, I just, I hear what you're saying, a treatment after treatment. Are we doing harm and detriment to the street over the long term by just putting treatment after treatment?
No, no, that's actually a best practice. It's kind of like, I've always used the reference of changing the oil in your car. You change the oil repetitively, and maybe you get a couple hundred thousand miles out of the car. You don't change it, and you get significantly less, and it's a lot more to change that than what, you know, you get significantly less, and it's a lot more to change that than what, you know, fifty oil changes would have cost. So no, it's really in the life of asset management is doing the lowest-cost treatment that extends that lifecycle, so you get a longer life out of it. Good question, though. All right, so as we move through these, I think we've covered each of the components here. As you see, red, yellow, green, again, good, fair, poor, and the percentage of each of those categories. That's at year fifteen. I couldn't break that down by year nine and fifteen. So look at the PCI values. That's where you're gonna see the change, where we go from good, you know, a good funding, we get to the peak, the funding runs out, and you start to see that condition taper off a little bit. The red lines in there, those are operational expenses. So the first one, there's no operational expense because, again, that's contract. We're not adding any full-time employees, we're not buying equipment, we're not buying, you know, any, anything to add to the program. That's in A1. If you go to A2, that is what I talked about with the county, the potential for us to be able to have them come in, chip seal, we provide the support services, we do all the prep work, we do all the cleanup, we do all the stockpiling, everything outside of actually just laying down oil and putting chip and rolling it. That would be what the county would complete, and then we would take care of the rest of that work. This line includes four full-time employees and some capital to help manage that program through the year. Because it's gonna be a year-round program. Once we have the employees in place, they're gonna continue on with pavement management in one form or another. So this is gonna include crack seal, patching and prep and everything that leads into those treatments as well. The next one, A3, is a variation, and so that's county, contract, and city. And again, that's the county laying down the chip, and this is assuming, potentially, the county is unable to keep up. Just looking like this year, the rains have put them behind, too. They're typically trying to finish in, say, the May-June time period. Their chip seal bled into July. We run into monsoon season, and so it's something that, if they don't have the capacity, just based on their workload or anything else, that we have the option to be able to sub part of that workout. A4, the last option, we talked about the option for the city to actually purchase the capital and do the work entirely inside. So when we did one of the last budget sessions, we, before four fifteen, we brought forward a slurry program. That included early chip with contractors, us purchasing the equipment and doing an in-house slurry program. And so we did the same cost breakdown for a in-house chip program. You see more people, and mainly because what we run into, like we used to in the past, if we're out, if we're doing thirty-five miles of road, depending on where you're at and the number of radiuses and things, you're talking anywhere between two weeks and a month or better of putting down chip. And so that entire month, your whole crew is doing nothing but that. They're not doing dirt roads, they're not doing weed abatement. They're dedicated to that. And that eight FTE is still assuming that we are subbing out trucking, we're assuming we're going to sub out traffic control. We're gonna use a contractor for the distributor truck. There's pieces in there. So this is really the main crew to take care of the chip seal and the support along with running the machine. Also includes the capital if we were gonna purchase a chip seal machine, and again, some crack seal equipment and trucks related to supporting that program. If you look, just kind of compare all of those options, A3 is really the best bang for your buck. If you look at the long term, when we get out past year nine, that's where it really hurts us with option A4, because our capital costs and our operation costs are high. So that cost is the full burn rate for your FTEs, that includes our operational costs, you know, internal services, fuel, insurance, all those components that go into it, the capital replacement. Materials are not included in that cost because those are captured in our decision tree. We cover the material cost based on the unit cost for each of those treatments, if that makes sense. Yes, sir.
Concerning A3, and you mentioned in A2 that the county may have a time lag doing their portion. Would that be the same case with A3?
Yes, it would. It would. But the, I mean, again, we still have a lot of conversation to have with the county. I met with Mr. Lutowski, their public works director, and, you know, they broke down their cost per mile. We've had a lot of conversation, but we do have a work share agreement. Again, we'll have more steps to go through. And just off the conversation we've had, they would be looking at taking care of the miles that we request from them in the fall. So they would start, you know, late in the summer and roll into the fall, most likely.
Mr. Pallanti, I might have missed it, but the current PCI is what's shaded in gray, like, let's say, the A3 option, fifty-seven, seventy-three, sixty-seven, and then at the end, it'll be good, fair, poor with this graph. Is that what you're saying?
So the shaded area, the fifty-seven is our PCI starting year one of the program?
Okay.
The, and I'm looking at A1, so the second number in that PCI shaded category is gonna be at year nine. That's when we've hit all the major funding years that we've had, and that's the highest PCI that we achieved. And then from there, I took the very last year of the cycle, which is at year fifteen, when we've gone back to essentially six years, five years of the barn restaurant tax.
So the pie graph represents which one of those?
The pie graph represents the network conditions.
Of year fifteen?
Year fifteen.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
I got one more, one more question, actually. I know that you gave a breakdown of the cost per square yard. By chance, do you have square mile?
I don't. The county, roughly, their cost was like twenty, not gonna be exact, but it was around twenty-five thousand per mile, and that was for a two-lane road, so assume twenty-four feet by one mile long.
Okay, thank you.
Jack, so are we, like, most of this work that's gonna be done is gonna be, like, chip sealing, is it gonna be on residential or just all across the board on all our streets? What are we looking at?
So if you look at the updated decision tree I had in there, the one with the red box, the only place that we made changes to was the residentials. There are some similar chip seals. It's a chip seal, but it's using, instead of emulsion, we use a hot rubber because it cools off really quick, and we can use that on some collectors because we can get in and out quickly. But predominantly, what you're gonna see, especially for the type of chip seal the county applies, is gonna be residential, which, talking to Mr. Lutowski, he said that's their bread and butter as well, and that's where they prefer to stay, is in those residential areas.
Which the majority of our lane miles are residential?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
So just to give you a comparison, we pulled in option B, again, one through four, and this one was also to reduce the operating reserve to thirty-five percent, but as well, this cut the capital projects by ten million dollars that was then reallocated back to asphalt. Same scenario, you look at the first one, it's contract price. The second one is with the county. B3 is county contract and us, and then the last one would be a full program for the city. It's kind of hard. You gotta look between the two different pages, but if you look at the the additional benefit, call it, the increase in your functional class, those pie charts, for the additional money that you're spending, which is pretty significant, because on B1, that's eighty-eight million dollars over that fifteen-year total, and when you're looking at A1, seventy-seven million. So you're talking almost ten million dollars difference, and you're not seeing a significant gain at that point in those condition categories.
Okay, it's good, because I'm reading that correctly. I was like, why is it gonna cost us more money if we're not seeing a significant improvement? But you addressed that. Thank you.
So to councillor, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Sam Lee, to her point, what you're seeing as part of that, the program is always trying to give us the best value, and so it's grabbing those roads that are close to dropping into the next category, and it's gonna, it's gonna try and treat those first. So although we have more money, it's grabbing those roads that are close to those areas and doing heavier treatments, so our bang for the buck is less at that point. And that really shows up when you look out past year nine and look at what our PCI does versus the amount of money we're spending on personnel, particularly on A4, or I'm sorry, B4. I missed a, I had a typo right there. So that's not, that's A4, B, whatever you wanna call it at that point. Sorry about that.
So, Jack, I really, I appreciate all the hard work, and I mean, these last two slides, increasing by ten million dollars, it really does not show a huge increase in the condition of our roads for that ten million additional dollars. So that really, that really is a good visual. Thank you.
And I would just point out that, based on our conversations with regards to the sales tax increase that we visited with the council through the last budget cycle, that's really in the, where you start seeing the gap, and recall, in our fifteen-year program, we were basically saying that over that period, we needed about a hundred and three million dollars. And so you start seeing that, when you supplement this A category with additional one-time revenue, you'd not, you're not really capturing the bang for the buck that that you would with ongoing revenue. That starts showing up, like Jack said, you start hitting year nine through fifteen, and when you go, when you start going back to what has been dedicated to roads over the years, your PCI starts slipping off quickly, and one-time money doesn't really help. I mean, that, basically, what you're short, that thirty-million-dollar addition of getting the roads to that original good category, I can't remember, is it eighty-five percent of our roads in the good category? Is where we originally started?
You're talking about the four fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, eighty-five percent. So, again, we thought it was really important, as Jack said, we looked at a bunch of different options, and it really boiled down to option A and option B. With the PCIs increasing substantially over a kind of a sprint, but then the long run is you see this start to slip again. So, of course, based on the two options, what we're working from and planning to work from is option A3. It just seems to be the most bang for our buck with that combination of participation from the private sector, the county partnership, and our having a crew that's dedicated to doing the work. So that's kind of, that's kind of where we are, so.
Yeah, I just, oh, you wanna go? Oh, thank you. Thanks. So I just wanna kind of point out just this one thing, is that this year, we still have quite a bit of money to do pavement preservation, and that although in twenty-two and in twenty, we didn't see a lot of preservation work happening because we had problems getting people and it was COVID, I just wanna be able to reassure people that they're gonna start seeing these projects happen, and that we are going to max out the budget this fiscal year. Correct?
So we're not gonna max it out. I'm sorry, Jack.
Nope.
But we're gonna, based on what the contractor can get done in the window between now and June thirtieth is our projection, based on already conversations with the contractor, is we will get five million dollars of work done. Starting with
By July one?
Yes.
Okay.
So Route sixty-six, Annie Divine, from Fifth Street down to the street, to the
Grandview.
To Grandview, yes, thank you, is gonna start in two weeks, three weeks.
Three weeks, the twentieth, President's Day.
Right. And that project came in at one-point-three million, and so people are gonna start seeing that money spent. And I shared with the council a list of projects that that ten million included. What Jack and Rob are now working with, with their contractor, is how much of that work can we get done? Which, you know, which of those roads are we gonna get done by June thirtieth? And the rest of those by the end of calendar year. So it will bleed into the fiscal year, but people are gonna see a large amount of work. What they're not gonna see is it happening in front of their house.
Right.
Currently.
But work will happen, and we'll get going on these. Is there really only one contractor available? No?
No, we use multiples, and we have our city JOC, you guys approved, that the engineering team had put together. So we have, depending on the treatments, because not every contractor does the same treatments, we have multiple contractors that we work with.
My only concern with teaming up with the county is that the county will come first, and then if we have some major weather events again, and everything gets pushed back, then we won't be maxing out the budget. I think what has to happen is we just have to be sure that we're spending the money that is there. Otherwise, you get further and further behind, and then the residents are upset, they're not seeing any roadwork, you know, and they're, they don't know why, they just wanna, they wanna see the roads, even though when you chip seal, they're gonna be more mad, but
They'll see it.
Then, you know, you can't win on that.
So I will say that the reason why we're talking about A3 is to guard against that. But what we absolutely know is what the window is for the counties, the work that they're doing for themselves, and we know when that window is. So it's just a matter of moving forward in the year, what does late July, August, September, October look like, and being able to supplement some of that work with private sector help, I think protects against exactly what you're saying, you know. You take a perfect, a perfect example of what you're talking about, happened last year, right?
Yeah.
We had an extremely wet August, so monsoons came kind of on time, but then they never stopped. And again, there was windows in there where we probably could have done some of the maintenance work. But was November nice enough to be able to do chip seal? And that's, you know, that's where that, you know, trying to capture what the county can do, what the private sector can do. And part of that really is, and I think Jack would tell you, is that if we've got the prep work done on roads, crack seal, the pothole fixes, and we're ready to go, then we can capture windows in that time period that maybe weren't available prior to not having that prep work done, so.
Okay. Is there flexibility if, say, this fall, we have the same scenario, and the county isn't able to do the chip seal, do we have the flexibility to pivot and hire a private contractor in the spring to do that work since it's all in the, then it's all in the same budget cycle? They do their own in the spring, so we know they're not gonna be able to do it. Is that enough time to hire, you know, a private company to come in and chip seal?
In regular times, yes. Like I say, COVID put things behind. They were having oil issues, trying to get emulsion and things, but typically, yeah, that's what we would do. We would, if you remember the last chip seal we actually ran, or program we ran that had chip seal in it, we brought that guy, that contract to you guys, you know, maybe September, October time period. They crack seal through the winter, and then they take care of the treatments in the spring. So it would be enough time to do that.
Okay. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that that's what we should do, is if we know that they're not gonna be able to do it in the fall, then go ahead and hire somebody in the spring, just to make sure that we're always using everything that we've got budgeted on these roads.
Yeah, and that's a great point, and, I mean, that is a benefit of looking at that, and quite honestly, it's not necessarily the direction I looked at it, but you're right. If the county comes in, and, you know, based on their workload or storms or anything else, they can't get to it, we have, we still have the ability to supplement that in the spring with those contractors, and that gives us enough time to put that contract together. and that gives us enough time to put that contract together.
Great, thank you.
Ron. Jack.
Go ahead.
Great job, sorry.
No, thank you very much.
I had A3 circled before you got through A1.
Awesome.
Also, I'll give you that. Um, as far as the finances, uh, the operating reserves, we're gonna keep that at thirty-five percent through those fifteen years, correct? Says reduce operating reserves to thirty-five percent.
Yeah, thirty-five percent through year.
Okay, so my.
Not through year fifteen, only through the year eight, so fiscal year thirty.
Oh, okay. Helps that. And by then, we'll have our commercial up and we'll start making more money and we can get the reserves built back up, correct?
Hopefully.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But none of, none of the money that's budgeted this year is gonna be spent on neighborhoods, is that over, is that?
That is correct. These, all the money that is currently budgeted is dedicated to arterial and collector streets. It's in that uh spreadsheet that I had shared with you.
Yep. I just wanted to be clear.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's all I have on that. If uh you guys have any additional questions, I'll try and answer those. Thank you for uh tagging along, hopefully I didn't bore you too bad. But uh, like I say, if you have any questions.
Okay, no other questions? Uh, we'd like to thank everybody for being here, all department heads, uh, all of you that are staying in the room. We appreciate you being here uh to answer any kind of questions. Of course, Manager Foggan, Tina, and Jack, and uh everybody here. If there's no other comments or questions for staff as far as budget, um, I think we're at an end. And of course, staff does have um a light dinner here for you to partake of. So, once again, this meeting is adjourned.